That would probably is March eighth, uh, meeting the order and, uh, Rod, would you like to lead us in pledge? Hope he not here. Left him.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where religion stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Angela, we got a public hearing.
Do you want Mr. Rutledge to do his presentation first or do you think they have a planning condition that would be first? Your preference?
Don, as a matter of fact. Mr. Reggie, Rutledge?
First, I want to know where you got your height from. Mom and dad weren't that tall.
Dad was about six two, but grandpa was about six three.
Oh, okay.
Other ancients. Lot of milk growing up, I think that's what.
That's what.
Well, uh, thanks for the opportunity to see you guys today. Um, thank you for the planning committee, uh, for the great. I guess I'll start off by introducing myself and my wife here. Who's controlling? You should control the slides over there. We can go to the next one. And, uh, so I'm Al Sholo, Amanda Rutledge, uh, our daughter Alexis. Um, we grew up in Fayette County and it was Fayetteville High School on Oak Hill. We moved away in two thousand and two, got a raised our family and started our careers and moved back and graduated twenty two, so that's old years later. Uh, grew up in Scarborough. Um, kind of during that time, we traveled, traveled all over the place, camped all over the place, have a real passion for it. And actually most of twenty twenty one and early twenty twenty two, we, uh, traveled to the US and Mexico in RV. So we've got to see a lot of different types of campground, a lot of different types of accommodations. I have a really good sense of what makes a good campground. Um, so now we're ready to settle back here and come pursue that dream of opening up our own small campground. Um, as some of you might know, the, the property was supposed to do this on, um, it's previously owned by my dad. We actually, parts of it, I sent it to my mom, so she's still there on parcel. In fact, this one, this parcel is where the, uh, the hot tunnels were that ultimately led to the, the Rick Rutledge Pavilion being built and kind of all that in Oak Hill. So those are now in, uh, repurposed. So there were people taking care of those and still using them after my dad's passing. So there's a boat been deconstructed, repurposed to other folks in Fayette County and they're going to continue using it for the same thing. So thankfully that doesn't go away with this proposed plan. Can you get the next slide? So the, the plan I'm talking about here is basically providing an immersive glamping experience. It's welcome to experience it at Rust and Private Western setting. Uh, this something maybe a little more, uh, non-traditional once often offered around here. Uh, we do plan to have three tent sites, a bath house and also going to build our cabin. We will be living on site and managing this campground, managing the bookings and everything. So this will be our, our, our primary sources of income and we're fully vested in this endeavor. And then we'll be offering various nice add-ons, like sparklers, fire pits and, and solar generation. So here's a new property, uh, the national line of our parcel, I think that's sixteen acres. And a little dot at the bottom there is, uh, my mom's property, she's still there. So you can see that we had a subject installed in two thousand and twenty-two that was oversized in anticipation of this plan. So it's designed for a five bedroom household like that on the property. Uh, but we will have, and then also in two thousand and two, the water supply will install. Great. The, uh, yellow items there are the tent sites and where the bath house will be in the star. And we've done, uh, excuse me, a significant amount to improve the access out here for parking. I think that five, uh, we found, uh, bucks of gravel so far out there through the access. Okay, and the next one. And a few things that we were reassuring the zoning board of, uh, utilities, as I mentioned, we had a water. And the sewer already, we have a contract in hand from AP and, um, laying the electrical conduits now to protect it. So, um, access, I mentioned, we've been improving the access significantly. We will be, we've been researching bank account for liability insurance. We'll be carrying that. We're also going to go the extra step of having something to come out through a tree top, kind of can't be evaluation. Make sure we put these tents in the woods. You know, if there's nothing overhead, it's too scary to, uh, do a tree professional. Um, and then we'll be providing kind of safety lighting on the little trail access and sound woods. Next one. All right. So what makes this maybe a little different than some of the other offerings already around here, uh, for lack of a better, uh, catchy marketing word? We, we think kind of does describe what we're trying to provide here. We want to be small and intimate. Um, we're trying to, I would say instead of growing volume over time, kind of make the existing sites nicer and, uh, and more accommodating for people. Uh, these will be kind of unique tents. This will be the first use of, uh, stout bell tents in West Virginia that we're aware of. We talked to them. They should be these all over the world. Uh, but they've never, uh, sold any in West Virginia. Um, and I have, I've been working over the past six months to a year. Uh, my dog got out of working on building out nature trails around the property. So there's a few miles of nature trails that folks can enjoy. Yeah, actually, so, so through these slides, uh, I think there's a few pictures that were supposed to be coming up as I was talking about. Yes, there's one of the, uh, some of the property there. If you go to the next line, and then with the trail, well, this is actually the road. And then, uh, location, I think is, is a little bit unique. You know, Fayetteville is considered kind of epicenter of the area, uh, for the New River Gorge National Park. I think rightfully so. But it is on the northern extent of the, uh, of the national parks. The star there is where we're located, kind of nice and central for anybody that's coming into town to do more than just whitewater rafting and kind of, uh, the stuff right in the middle of the Gores. Then we go down to Sandstone Falls, a nice convenient location. And just the left of the star is Palm Water Lake. So it's a, a really good, uh, recreational area. And a few things here, I think most people are aware that the general benefits of, of this kind of thing increase tax revenue overall, floors and growth. We, we hope to be able to make a dent here. Uh, but some of the more interesting things, um, you know, market trends indicate unique experiences are in high demand and that, uh, the new trends, platform, and for planting there over the past ten or fifteen years, it showed a significant rise in interest. And, uh, the dirt.com and did their twenty twenty-three annual campground report, I pulled a few words out of there. Um, it's harder than ever to get a campsite. It's five times harder according to them to get one in twenty twenty-two. They want to recreate them at their reserve campsite. And fifteen million Americans have been camping for the first time in the last two years. So that's a pretty big number. So there's a big demand for this, big demand for different experience, big demand to get back to nature. So we hope to kind of, uh, go to bolster that around here. And there is a need for short-term rentals, as we saw at the, uh, I guess the update on the, um, uh, the zoning commission received from the, the plan document with the county or whatever. There's a, there's a need for that. So we have to go. That's all we got. Just try to work the main picture.
You got any questions for him?
I don't have.
Well, I, I have a couple of comments. Um, I know the property very well. I, uh, I was there when they built their, their log house that Kathy currently lives in. Um, I've, we've readily cut down Christmas trees with farming equipment when I was belling hay up there. Um, and, and the areas that they're going to put these, proposed glamping, air glamping, I guess, which called areas in, uh, could be a good fit for that property.
I'd like to see the first couple of slides again. This is Commissioner Taylor. I was having some tech, technical difficulties and had to sign off and sign back in.
Well, the first slide is the picture of myself, my wife and my daughter.
I did see that one.
All right, let's see what the next ones were.
I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Were you, uh, able to see the aerial image?
Was I able to see the what?
The aerial image or the?
No, that's, I did not see that one.
That one would be a good one to flash up. Yeah. So this is one where I was mentioning, you know, there's a kind of a big field in the center of the property. And that's where people will be accessing where the bath house will be. And then those, uh, three dots off from the forest line will be the tent sites. The star is the proposed bath house.
Just one second. Um, I just saw the screen share. So let me just check this out here.
Not much around there. We're at the end of the dead end road.
And how many tents are you putting in?
Three.
Camp sites?
Yes.
How many?
Three.
Oh, three. Well, does it have to be rezoned to do three? I thought you were allowed to do that many without rezoning.
No, Allison, any cabins or campgrounds have to be B three.
Okay, thanks, Angela. Okay, um, what's the next slide, just in case?
Did you hear me talk about this one?
No, I didn't. That's what, because I didn't have, um, sound so that I had to sign on.
This is an important one. So I, I was mentioning the, uh, utilities. We do have septic installed in two thousand and twenty-two. It was significantly oversized for the sites designed for a five bedroom household. And so that's the accommodative bath house, uh, which only has two showers. Um, and then, uh, water well has been installed in two thousand and twenty-two. It's been functioning great. And we are under contract, or about to be under contract with AP. We have that in hand, uh, for the power on site. We're also going to be, uh, we've also significantly improved the access and we do work there. Um, and right now it's in great condition. Uh, and we've been researching general liability insurances for campground and we'll be carrying that. And we're also doing a tree top hand at the evaluation, um, with a licensed professional, kind of go around and look where these proposed sites are and ensure that kind of any, anything that looks hairy overhead will be taken out for the, uh, cameras. And safety lighting for, for access down into the woods and at the campsite.
Okay, I did see the subsequent slides, but I think we're good now.
Okay.
All right. So their request is, um, to change it from rural residence, what it is now to B three, which is our business tourism district. The planning commission did meet on Monday, March sixth, and Mr. Willis motioned to approve the land classification and Mr. Perry is seconded, and it was unanimous. It'll be up to you guys to accept their recommendation.
No motion to approve. Second, all in favor? All right. You here for the assessor? You have anything for us?
Okay, um, be the real property first. Um, have a real property exoneration presented to this panel. You have the person's name? Linda Aguilar?
Yep.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Second, we have personal property exonerations. Uh, there's actually multiple for this. Majority of it is an erroneous assessment. There's multiple names and, uh, of course they'll be attached to the minutes. So I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second, all in favor? That it? Okay, I make a motion to approve, uh, first half payroll to March, uh, tenth. Second, all in favor? As far as the vouchers and invoice, I have a couple of questions for Kim. On your, uh, invoices, none of that money was already paid through state buyer funding was?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
How many engines does Oak Hill have, Tim?
It has four engines.
Four engines, okay.
One aerial, two rescues, and one pickup. And two side by sides.
You have any questions, Don?
Nope.
Straightforward. A motion to approve. Second, all in favor? Thank you, Kim.
I, I want to comment in regard to your number one center. Fire Association Fire Chiefs met with Anya and her staff in regard to the updating of the mapping and the, uh, insertion of the electronic mapping data to the center. We all had an opportunity to walk through and applaud her. It's, it's really positive. We really did it in the right direction.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thanks for that feedback.
Very nice. Do we have any minutes?
Yep, she's got. Make a motion to approve the minutes from March first.
Second, all in favor?
Let's tell her, is she still with us, Miss Spencer?
What was I supposed to do?
Oh, I was just checking to see if you heard, heard the minutes and everything. Did you catch?
I said aye to everything so far.
Oh, okay, okay.
For today's minutes sake.
Okay, so the first thing on the exhibit was a support letter for the grant committee. Allison, you wanted to postpone that to next week so you can make some edits, right?
I, I do, and, and just for my colleagues' benefit, um, there was a statement in there obliging us to commit. It didn't say the amount, but, um, there was also, it, it just was really murky, like it referred to the valley in several different ways. And it was very lengthy to send to a department secretary or department head. So I wanted to try to make it a little more concise. And if we have to maybe, you know, put a, a chart or some bullet points or something in it to break it down a little easier for the reader. So that, that was going to take more time than I had between receiving it yesterday and this morning's meeting. So I'd like to go ahead and just put it off until next week. So I moved to postpone that item until, uh, Wednesday, the fifteenth of March.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, so this is the signal. In case I have questions, it's Kevin Walker's, um, it's his emergency management performance grant that reimburses for his salary. Just needs significantly.
Okay, I move we approve it.
Second, all in favor?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So the next thing, we got a notice in the mail about one of the dilapidated properties. We have a lien on. Somebody bought the property. I guess at the pack sale. And then you want to explain this process?
The lien follows.
It does not.
The lien is not following?
Okay, that's basically. We got a lien on this property from prior action of the enforcement agency and I'm assuming destruction of a dilapidated building. Where this property was sold at a tax sale, essentially, there's, there's two issues that we're dealing with. The lien expires.
Ten years, I guess.
Yes, the lien expires. This appears to have been forwarded on April eleventh. So the lien expires in approximately a month. We can extend it if we want to. But the bigger issue is that, um, we have until April twenty-third to redeem this property. If we don't redeem it, then the individual that purchased this property at the tax sale will become the owner. And our lien is extinguished. So one of the questions Ruth had for me is what do we get for our, um, money if we decide to redeem this property? The only thing we get is we preserve the lien.
So you don't, but we do own the property upon redeeming it?
No, no, no. You do not acquire ownership if you redeem it. The only thing you do is preserve the lien.
Yep, wow, okay.
So it's.
Is that, there's a reason for this and encode that way? I mean, I'm, I'm.
I mean, and to be honest, I'm, I consulted with a couple of other attorneys that are more familiar with real estate law than, than I am. And, and the, the individuals I talk to, I trust they're, they probably forgot more about real estate law than, than I have ever known. But my understanding was that, was that if we redeem it, the only thing we do is preserve the lien. And I talked to two other lawyers who confirmed that. Basically, um, if the property is redeemed, the ownership status returns to the, the status that was held prior to the tax sale. So it would go back to being owned by, um, whoever, Mr. Hobert, and I believe there's another, uh, property owner listed, they would, they would be the owners of the property and we would still hold a lien property. You know, a suggestion that was made to me was that, um, it may not be a bad idea to reach out to, uh, Mr. Howington, the person that purchased the property at the tax sale and ask Mr. Howington to pay us at least part of our lien. And in exchange for that, we would agree to not redeem it.
What is the amount of the lien or is there?
I think it's nine thousand dollars.
The lien's about nine, yeah, it's, it's nine thousand dollars to redeem the property. We're looking at twelve hundred sixty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Now, as far as what, what this property is actually worth, it's situated between Greentown, it's a Greentown Road and Route, Greentown Loop Road and Route nineteen. The assessor's office hasn't valued it far less than nine thousand dollars. I, I don't follow the amount, but it's, it's far less than nine.
That's the assessed value or the praise value?
Appraised value is less than nine thousand dollars.
Do we know what the, what the buyer paid for it?
Um. It appears that. A couple hundred bucks, the way I'm reading this, almost two hundred dollars is what was paid. And then, of course, there were expenses subsequent to the purchase of the tax sale. I mean, that's actually most of the amount to redeem it. The title exam and the preparation of the list for service and then, um, service of the notice.
So it's less than eleven hundred bucks?
Well, actually, I mean, the way I read this, the purchase price was less than two hundred dollars.
My concern about this is precedent. So, so did we, did we spend nine thousand dollars to mitigate that property?
I would assume so, Allison. I mean, this lien was recorded almost ten years ago and I would assume and it, the, the, the information in the notice indicates that this was pursuant to our dilapidated building ordinance. So it stands to reason that the county paid, cleaned up this property. Angela is saying that a structure was torn down and there was asbestos on the structure.
So I guess, I guess we would have to balance the practical, you know, I mean, I don't know if this is a person is just buying up a bunch of property in the county or for somebody who actually wants to do something with the property, you know, but, you know, if it were the former or, uh, if it were the latter, that somebody wants to do something, then we, you know, might have an interest in releasing the lien. If it's the former, uh, that would be more of an argument to precedent because we're about to start, you know, we're about to ramp up this program again. And I don't want to get in the habit of spending money on tearing down a property and putting the lien on it and then forgiving that lien.
That's exactly what I was saying a, a month ago, that we need to come up with something. You're absolutely right. Come up with something. Instead of the, the people's money being spent and then this happening, or it's, it's set on and it's not developed. I agree a hundred and ten percent.
Yeah.
Are, are we under a time restraint?
On this particular, yes, we've got till, we have until April. We have April, until April eleventh to renew it and then, um.
And renewing it does keep the lien there.
Yes, yeah, but, but the flip side of that though, Tom, is if, if we don't redeem this property as soon as the ownership is transferred.
Clean title.
Yes, they get a clean title.
I think I said something on here. I've seen something on there.
So realistically, we need to do something by the first of April. Yeah, so we have.
See, the way this is set up, anybody could do this to any piece of property, wanting to bloody buy it or, or anything. I mean, cleaning property.
Well, the other thing too, to keep in mind is, is we have the ability with the lien to force the sale of property. So that, that's something else to consider now.
Well, how can, I don't understand how something could have gone at a tax sale for eleven hundred dollars with a nine thousand dollar lien on it. Like, that seems like a process problem.
Uh, anybody can buy a piece of property if they don't have a deep search on it.
I'm not, I'm not following what your concern is, Allison.
Well, my concern is why would we accept a lower amount of money for a property when there is a, a county? Why would the county in a tax sale accept less money for a property when there is a nine thousand dollar county lien on it?
It's always been.
I, I don't think that has, I, I mean, the reality, the reality is, is if the property is put up for auction, it's, it's based on the outstanding property taxes. It's not based on the. It's not based on the amount of any liens that may be. But.
Over the value.
Or value.
Yeah, over that.
So, so essentially what they do is they start, the starting bid is to pay the back taxes and interest on the back taxes. And then if there's a bidding, um, if there's a bidding war between prospective buyers, then certainly that drives up the price. But it doesn't take, it doesn't take into consideration the value of the property. It doesn't take into consideration the value of any liens that are attached to the property.
I feel like we need more information to make this decision.
You want to postpone it to the fifteenth?
Yeah, I'd like to, but let's figure out what, who's going to.
Okay, next week.
Calls to find out the information. I mean, I think, I think I agree with what Anthony said about reaching out to the owner. But I also want to know from the, the buy, I mean, the buyer, also want to know from the buyer what the plan is. Um, I, I don't even. So if it would revert to the prior owner, like, do we even know the circumstances under which it was sold at a tax sale?
Did you hear that, Allison? Angela says that she believes that there are, um, multiple owners that inherited their ownership interest in this property and that most, if not all of them at this point are deceased. The, the tax ticket, if I remember correctly, is going to, um, two people, I think in Ohio, was it?
I, I would like to reach out to them, see what they're going to be using the property for, or if they're just buying up a bunch of property.
Okay, you mean the buyer?
Yes.
The buyer, I don't know that we have, I'll see if I can get contact information with the buyer. The, the, the people who are being sent the tax ticket are in Ohio. They may not even be alive at this point, but, um, at this juncture and the fact that they didn't pay the last, they didn't pay taxes on this property for a couple of years. It's probably a good indication. They want nothing to do with the property, but I'll see, I'll see if I can find out the contact information for Mr. Howington. Who is the individual that purchased the property at the tax sale.
If we were to take action, and I don't remember the terms you used, um, to retain the property um, or, or have it revert to whoever owns it now, what are the implications? If, you know, obviously we don't want it, we don't want a big nebulous issue with that property either on how to figure out how to do something with it. Like, can we, can we do something with the lien we have on it to take ownership ourselves? Or do, you know, after we, what do we have to do, I guess, to make sure it doesn't stay in limbo in perpetuity if we were not relieved this lien?
I need to double check on this, but I believe we should have the, we being the county should have the ability to force the sale of your property to enforce our lien.
Make a foreclosure or something?
It, it's basically you have, you file it. The way I've seen it done in other cases is you have to file a civil suit in circuit court. And the circuit court will appoint a special commission to sell the property. And then the property is sold and the lien, to the extent it's able to be satisfied, is satisfied from the sale proceeds.
Is that in this? Coming up?
No.
Thirty, that's.
No, that's different.
Okay, I'm just. Now, on this.
I guess, I guess on that then, I would say to my colleagues, we need to consider what all of that would cost, you know, the, you know, litigating it and doing all that, given the. You know, litigating it and doing all that, given the appraised value of the property. You know, anticipating we would probably not get any money out of selling it.
Well, if could we bid against, could we bid in the bidding and uh? If the if the. Price is too low, anybody's bidding, could the county bid to?
I don't I don't know why you couldn't.
Okay, that that would solve that.
Well, and do we want it? I mean, you know, that's another thing.
Well, want it, we can always try to say. I mean, just look at the options to to.
I mean, the the property, if you're, just to kind of give you an idea of where it's located, if you're coming from Beckley. Headed toward Oak Hill and you get to the Greentown Road exit. And right past the Greentown Road exit. Um, there's a strip of property to your right that is. Situate between Route nineteen and Greentown Loop Road during election. There's that one house there that there's always campaign signs in the yard. It's right, it's right before you get to that house. If I'm not mistaken, it's one or two parcels prior to that house. So that's the area that. That's where this property is located.
Yes, and I believe at that time, that property owner wanted to purchase that piece of property. But he wasn't able to because the lien that was on it.
And and the problem is, is when you end up in a situation where you've got multiple heirs and you don't even know who the heirs.
No, I've dealt with that.
You 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 can't really do an arms-length transaction. The only way to really end up acquiring ownership is to go through some type of a forced process. Whether it's a partition suit filed by one of the owners or whether you're enforcing the lien or or a tax sale.
Yeah, but uh, yeah, that property owner was definitely interested in that property and he couldn't couldn't get it. You want to postpone this, Taylor? To the fifteen?
Yeah, I do, since we're getting to nine thirty and I just feel like we need to, we need a little more information before we make this decision.
Does the committee, I'm sorry, does the commission want me to do anything in the meantime? Do you want me to try to reach out to Mr. Howington and see what he's willing to do with with the understanding that the commission would have to finally say so?
Just make him aware that that there's a nine thousand dollar lease on it or a lien against it.
He, I'm sure he knows because he paid, he paid to have a title search done and he's he's served notice of the. Redemption issue on the county, so. He's he's aware, he's aware of the lien.
Yeah, I would, I would like that. Um, and also if. Angela, could you take a look at the? At the records and and see, you know, if he's one of those folks who are buying up property in the area? You know, just.
I looked and he only owns one other piece of property in Fayette County, so I don't think so. I've already emailed Anthony his mailing address information.
Good, Mr. Howington.
Yeah, he only has one other piece of property in Fayette County, so I don't think, he doesn't live close to this property, though. He lives probably three miles away.
So he lives in Fayette County?
Yes, now.
Okay, well, that's that's a significant factor, too.
He's probably been to the property.
So many others.
Yeah, unlike so many others that.
Yeah. All right, then I'll make a motion to. Hold on to this until three fifteen meeting to give us time to research.
And to explore, I'll reach out to Mr. Howington and and see if he would be willing to pay us something for the lien. With the understanding that the county commission would have to approve any any proposal. And also, and I think Allison also wanted to gauge um what his intentions were with the property.
Yeah.
If if he'd be willing to share that with us.
Your counsel should should attend next week's meeting.
Who?
Mr. Howington or his counsel.
Okay.
May want to attend next week's meeting by Zoom or phone or whatever.
All right, well, I'll I'll invite him.
I made a second with John's motion. All in favor?
Okay.
Nine thirty.
Pass nine thirty.
Yeah.
Not too bad, Ruth.
I think we need to. Act upon the ordinance first.
We can. Basically, if if you guys took a look at the email, the only issue. That I think we need to address as far as the ordinance is the ordinance gives the county commission to assess a. A daily civil penalty if people fail to abide by the county commission's order. What is concerning to me is the ordinance doesn't say how much. Um, I was thinking. A maximum of two hundred dollars a day and with with the understanding that when the county commission issues an order. You can pick a number as low as one or as high as two hundred, and it it probably would make sense to implement some kind of a graduated. Penalty sanction as far as, you you know. Fifty dollars a day for the first sixty days, a hundred dollars a day for the next sixty, and then, you know, so on. Um, but, you know, two hundred dollars a day, I think, would be a. A good place and consider that that's. Um, six thousand dollars a month if you impose that full amount.
Is there any code on the minimum or maximum penalty?
Not not that I'm aware of. It just says that we can do it.
I'm just curious if there was a code, like state code or?
Not, I'm not aware of any provision that says the minimum amount or the max, sets the minimum amount or maximum amount. The code says that we can do it. But i- it's obviously up to the the up to the discretion of the the county commission, whether or not. I mean, I think we need to have a number, what that number is, what that number is. I'll leave that up uh to the county commission. But like I said, if you set a maximum amount, you don't have to implement that amount as the daily penalty. You can set any amount less than that amount.
Sounds good.
Okay, and if I understand correctly, we would just do. An an amendment to the ordinance.
Correct. And the only amendment would be implementing a dollar amount. A specific dollar amount where there is none at this point. And then where this comes into play is Angela's going to do some presentments to the county commission here shortly. Um, and essentially. What is going to happen next is I'm going to prepare complaints based on. Um, Angela's presentations. These are going to be sent to um the property owners. Property owners will have ten days from the date of service to request a hearing. If they don't request a hearing, then the county commission's. Directives will. Come into play. If they do request a hearing, then we have to have a hearing and they can come in and present evidence and um. Argue to the county commission as to why the enforcement agency's recommendation is not the appropriate one. So where this is going to come into play is if the county commission. Issues an order directing the property owner to tear down the property and dispose of it legally within thirty days. The civil penalty comes in for the time subsequent to the deadline. So if the county commission. Says we want the property, we want the structure to demolish and disposed of within thirty days. And then subsequent to the thirty days, we're going to assess a civil penalty of fifty dollars per day in the event the job is not completed by that deadline. Whatever your all's preference is as far as the deadline.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, uh, Anthony, could you do me a favor?
Certainly.
Could you look at all the other uh liens on the property and make sure they're not getting run out?
Um, I will do, I will do.
Do you want to talk about?
Yeah, you're talking about the, you're talking about the dilapidated.
Yeah, all the other.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, certainly.
Okay, so. Per Anthony's recommendation. On how to amend the ordinance. Uh, I like the fifty dollars for sixty days, hundred dollars for sixty days second. Hundred and fifty for sixty days third, going up to a maximum of two hundred dollars a day. After a hundred and eighty days or the the sixty sixty sixty.
Well, I think if you just, if you just set a maximum amount, the county commission can set whatever schedule it wants.
Okay.
So if we just set a maximum amount of two hundred dollars a day, if you, when you issue your order on the buildings, you can. At that point, issue the civil penalty up to two hundred dollars a day.
Okay, all right, thank you. Allison, do you have any thoughts on it?
Well, yeah, for Anthony. Wouldn't that, I I would be concerned about consistency if we didn't have an established schedule of of fines.
Yeah, good too. Well, it's the county commission's prerogative if 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 you want to implement a preset schedule as far as the. You're certainly willing or restricted to do that.
I, no, I'm just wondering, I mean, is there a reason that that you're not or that your recommendation didn't include that?
I think if we just simply set a maximum amount, it gives the county commission the flexibility to address. Each specific property. Um, pertinent to the facts regarding that property. The county commission may feel that, I mean, let's say, for example, we come across a piece of property and there's a significant asbestos hazard. The county commission may want to ramp up the um. Daily civil penalty much faster to give the property owner more incentive to deal with the asbestos issue or if there's some other hazard on the property. Rather than just dilapidation. Um, and certainly. I I don't think we need to make the schedule part of the um. I don't think we need to make the schedule part of the ordinance, but certainly in practice, the county commission can can have a schedule. That it thinks is appropriate as far as implementing.
We had sort of something in this order, so.
No, actually, if if the ordinance specifies a maximum of two hundred dollars a day, I think we can.
By what I'm saying, we do have to have its outline.
Yeah, if we have.
An amount, right.
Dollars a day maximum, the county commission is free to invoke that penalty. As deemed appropriate, as long as you say under that two hundred dollars a day.
Schedules doesn't mean anything, as long as you say a minimum a day or a maximum maximum a day, yes.
And I agree with that.
And and the reason I didn't want to, my thoughts on having a set schedule is, like I said, we may have a a structure that has. A much more serious hazard attached to it than another structure. You may want to impose. A higher penalty sooner if the property owner fails to comply.
Yeah.
That makes sense. I appreciate it. I figured there was a reason behind it. I just didn't know what it was.
Well, it's just, it's like I said, it's just to give you guys flexibility to deal with each particular piece of property based on the hazards that. That we encounter.
Yeah, one building could be a hundred square feet, one would be ten thousand square feet.
Right, and I I didn't think we ought to, just for everybody's memory, I do, I feel like when we do hear those cases, though, we need to very clearly articulate. Why we're imposing whatever penalty we're imposing, just to make sure.
I I agree one hundred percent, so the minutes reflect the rationale.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, Allison? Tom, what are you?
No, I move we approve the ordinance, amended ordinance as presented. Um, with the change of the two hundred dollars maximum per day.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Yes.
One step closer.
I don't make you close, John.
Ready?
Okay.
All right, so you guys are going to see this. This is going to be redundant, um, but I met with Anthony and. Whatever reason, there is a step that we have never done before, so Anthony called it. So he got me some new letters and um basically what the step that was missed, the beautification committee never actually made recommendations on what they want done to the property presented to you guys. So we are back at it again, so we'll have to go case by case. I will read you what they're finding, what they think wrong with the property and what they want done. And Anthony, should they vote one at a time on each case?
Yeah, because they could be different information.
Well, now, should they vote after I present the case? They need to vote case by case.
Uh, yes, absolutely. And and in addition to you, if you adopt the enforcement agency's recommendation. Um, you're also going to need to give us a recommendation as to the timeframe or for the property owners in.
And then basically what will happen, I'll give the details to Anthony and Anthony will be able to complain, correct? Asking them to.
We have to serve them.
Right, that's what I'm saying. All right, so the first case is case one, address thirteen fifty-two Scarborough Road. In Scarborough, so the beautification met and the property is abandoned and not being used in the residence. The dwelling appears to be unusable and unsafe for human habitation. It is unusable as a business. The roof of the dwelling or structure is obviously compromised. It appears to be in a general state of disrepair. The dwelling or structure does not appear to be connected to any utility services, so the enforcement agency. Recommends that property be demolished and legally disposed of. And all these property owners have been notified in the past. These are cases to be before.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the enforcement agency. And.
Nope, go ahead.
And impose a fine after thirty days of fifty dollars per day. After sixty days, it goes up to a hundred dollars per day. After a hundred and eighty days, it goes up to a hundred and fifty dollars per day. And after two hundred and forty days, it goes to a maximum of two hundred per day.
Is that what we're doing with these right now, is deciding what fines to assess?
And the timeframe for the demolition.
Okay, so do you have a a timeframe in there, John?
Uh, within thirty days.
No, I'd be happy with just fifty dollars a day because thirty days, it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so.
With the property is not going to be, by at one year's period of time, you're talking about fifteen thousand dollars property, not probably worth seven hundred, seventy-five hundred dollars. That's why I'm looking at a rational point of view. I'm not looking at a.
What would it cost us to tear it down?
I would quickly guess roughly, I don't think it has, I would say seven grand. I haven't got a quote lately because I normally wait until you guys order it then before.
When in six months, you're at seven grand.
Is that demolition and disposal?
Yes.
Yeah, I think. To cap it, you know, at least cap, you know, properties if we can at at the demolition expense. As far as the fines that people rack up.
See, I think, John, what the way you're doing it is, if we go to a. And I may be wrong, I may be wrong. You go to a school that needs done and you and the maximum's two hundred dollars a day, I just. After thirty days, I think I would be fifty dollars a day on this property. I don't know how Allison feels about it. I don't know whether she can weigh in. She's more of a lawyer than I am. Did I get my degree?
Had to write that one down.
That's a joke for everybody. I just see that if they're not going to do it after six months, seventy-five, that'll be seventy-five hundred dollars right there. It'd be more than that. Three months, let's see what it is.
It's nine thousand dollars after six months at fifty dollars a day.
It's more than that, seventy-five hundreds with the property.
So I think. Tom's moving to limit the five hundred fifty dollars, subjugate to a random motion for fifty dollars per day regardless of.
Yeah, but I'd like to see what, John. I mean, I want, I want everybody's voice in this, but I'm just telling you my rationale.
I was just going with what we just passed with the ordinance, so. That was just that, so. Well, let's let's start all over again. And and one thing we need to remember. When a motion's made, we got to make sure that we either. Not accept the motion or accept the motion. So we need to get all the discussion down the way first. That was my bad in in doing the motion so quickly. So I'll 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 do the emotion again. I make a motion to accept. The recommendation of the enforcement agency. And to have the structure. Demolished within thirty days.
Demolished and disposed of.
Demolished and disposed of, thank you. Um, and enforce a fifty dollar fine per day after that, if it is not taken care of.
Second.
On favor?
Wait, wait.
Okay.
Are we gonna cap it at six months?
Do we have to let you know about that too?
Well, I'm just, here, here's my thing, at what point do we put a lien on the property?
Well, basically, if they don't voluntarily destroy and demolish, then we have to file a suit to get the court order to allow us to do it, and as part of that process, that's when we get the judgment of the lien.
Okay, so there would be some legal expenses technically, um, involved in it too, in addition to the cost of tearing it down.
Potentially.
Can, can we just say it not to exceed the cost of demo?
And legal fees.
And legal fees.
I just don't wanna get into a situation where we've got something going in perpetuity, you know what I mean? On somebody that, you know, I mean, the real point of, of assessing fines is, don't make us have to come do it.
Yeah.
And if we have to come do it, you have to pay us back for the taxpayer dollars spent, and taxpayer dollars do pay, even if Anthony files the suits for us, which he probably will, um, that's still taxpayer money. His time is going toward it, so we need to calculate up some kinda, you know, cost what we think a demolition would be and the legal fees, you know, and then, and then not let the fines exceed that amount, in my view, or, or even couch it as expenses related to our mitigation.
I, and I agree with that a hundred, basically, that's what I was saying before, not in the terms that you just put it in, you're, I agree with you, absolutely right. Can't do this to somebody who owes a hundred thousand dollars and you have something, and just the property's worth seventy-five hundred dollars, so.
So, so can we, can we make it at fifty dollars a day and then not to exceed, um, the cost of mitigating the property? Um, and then, and we can, and Anthony can, I mean, there's, there's basically, we can quantify the amount of time his office has to spend on any legal issues by doing an hourly rate.
Basically demolition, disposal, legal fees and other associated mitigation costs.
Correct.
It sounds good to me.
Okay, so Tom seconded.
Yeah. There's somebody did.
I'm in favor.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye. Yeah. I tell you, get this down where everybody is, is happy with it between John, me and Allison. That's right, that's right.
That's what I was gonna say, that's right, okay.
Now we've got it down, so hit us, Angela.
The next one, the rest will go fast.
So the next one is case ten, it's six two eight five Menlo Trail, Charlton Heights, West Virginia. The enforcement agency met on March second, and they believe the property is abandoned and not being used as residence or business. The dwelling situated on the above parcel bill appears to be unusable and unsafe for human habitation, dwelling.
Which property?
That is not that one.
I see property out of the.
Yeah, that is, that is.
I mean.
That is Charlton Heights.
Yeah, case ten. Thank, we, we all good?
Yeah, isn't this the property we held off on until we?
We did, and so part of the process because prior, because they didn't have a recommendation for you guys.
Something that came to light during the enforcement. That is that this structure does not, it looks like it's actually got the same.
You look in this corner here, where it started, here, right? I did bring that up to the committee that has had some concern, but.
Okay.
In the house, and I don't know if you can look in the right hand corner where that opening is, is actually blocked there and it's.
Yeah, we didn't see, we didn't pay attention.
So, um.
Alright.
So, basically, um, let me go, windows are not intact, allowing whether to intrude into dwelling or structure. Doors are missing or not intact, allowing whether to intrude into dwelling or structure. So the recommendation of the enforcement agency is that the structure situated on the property be demolished and legally disposed of.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the enforcement agency and cap the fines to the cost of demolition and legal fees. So moved.
And, um, timeframe for demolition and disposal?
Thirty days.
And the fee amount?
Oh, and, and the per day max of fifty dollars. Thank you, Allison.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're getting it.
Okay.
Alright.
What's the next number?
The next one is property twenty-six, it is ninety-six Hope from Loop, Lookout, West Virginia, two five eight six eight. The dwelling or structure appears to be in general state of disrepair, the dwelling or structure does not appear to be connected to any utility service, and there is debris or refuse on, present on property. The recommendation of the enforcement agency is that all debris and refuse situated on property be legally disposed of. Now notice, not the structure, just the debris, that the structure be repaired within sixty days for the following issues to be addressed. Board of the windows, clean all trash and debris from property. One of the reasons, just a side note on this, the property owner, I believe, has reached out to our office as well as Anthony's office, and they do intend to move back into this property, um, it has been in this situation for several years, but this is her only property that she can live into, so that was their recommendation on why they did not let it demolished. Is to give her sixty days to clean it up and board it up if she does not intend on taking immediate.
Okay. Go ahead.
Set this one for a future meeting in sixty days to reconsider if she hasn't.
Anthony, do you still send her a letter, though, from the county commission?
Um, if the county commission.
Are you Miss Brown?
Here right now, so.
Okay. That was perfect timing, yes.
Please come up to the microphone, these are the commissioners, there is stuff in your, um, that I believe you wanna move back into right now?
Yes, it is, and I'm telling you.
Okay, if you'd step up here in the microphone so people can hear you, please.
Okay, I had to move five years ago. Well, that area, a long time, I said.
Yes, absolutely.
Five years ago, my husband was dying, they told me I had to move plus C A and C. I did it. And it started moving in my house and doing what they wanted to, lock it up, they turn, open, go in. They hauled all their garbage in there, tore up stuff, and I'm fixing my house back up right now. Done put Allison's into it, got a whole lot more to put in. And I plan on it two times, there's my grandson, I said, I'm gonna clean it out, get it ready for the garbage, we took off. And he put it outside. That's what, that is there next to that window, and I'm down past that dryer, there's another one there. I've got, get dumpsters, get that out of there, I've been working since September on it, but it's a slow going. I've had to replace floors, I've had to, uh, get it cleaned out, so I get the garbage out there. My furniture's already in there, stored in there, cause I'm homeless right now. I'm living with some, some friends, my daughter's boyfriend's parents, it's where I'm at. I can't lose this, I've got, and I can't afford to play y'all, play them. But I'm getting it, in the summer, I'll have a lot better. But that's there, the white there on this side is the rooms he built on. I've got a few things doing there, not a lot, but in two bathrooms, they use my toilet till it frozen dusted completely. And I've got new stuff in there, I've got the bedroom floors replaced, I still got bathrooms to do. Got to put a front door up, they tore up the front door. And I'm moving in a sense, I can get that hair ready and lottery in there. And I'm gonna work under that blanket in, but I'll be back in within about a month.
Okay, Ms. Brown, can you get all that accomplished within sixty days?
I don't know, I'm seventy-four years old, and I have, I'm a widow, I don't have people to work. You can't find hardly people to work now.
So you, it, the trash and stuff, I believe is what we're talking.
Get the trash out.
I think that's what we're.
If you does have two, which is the next case, on this location, they did request that all the debris from the property be removed within sixty days.
Yeah, that's the only thing I think the commission's asking, the trash, yeah.
Trying to get over there today, direct one dumpster, and I've got people this weekend that can load it, but it's gonna take a couple of dumpsters.
Yeah.
And the other trailer, that's another dumpster full, because I'm gonna use that for storage of the doors back on it, cause it kicked doors off. And they filled it up with garbage bags down my house, they just put their stuff forever. But in the other trailer that I've got, they just put garbage bags, it's completely full, there was nothing in that trailer. They've got a full of garbage, I've got a new furnace in the other trailer I'm putting in it, they broke this window out, right here. I gotta replace that window, other than that, about, that, it's there.
Well, I think it's what the commission's asking, just to clean the, just clean it up right now, sixty days cleaning, is that right?
Yeah, this, this case is.
Okay.
Uh, someone's kind of supposed to have came in on that dryer, I had two stokers sitting outside, I'm almost totally unable to go anymore. And they didn't have a place for them in the house, and they didn't try to find a place, they set them outside when they made the stuff up here. Somebody come that very week and stole them. I could lay a screwdriver on my porch or up there and go to bed, next morning the screwdrivers sold. They steal everything.
Well, I have, I have a suggestion, uh, I, I think we oughta set this for review in sixty days. Um, and Angela, the building commission should review in sixty days before it's before us. Um, and also, I'd like to put, uh, Ms. Brown in touch with our litter control officer in case there are any, there's any recommendations he has to help with that.
Well, he happens to be sitting here right now.
Wonderful, hey, Dan?
Can I say something on this matter? Yes, I've had several complaints about the property. Um, we have some funding from the state through reprogram, about a golden ticket, we could potentially issue you to haul your stuff to landfill, if you have means of hauling it to landfill. Um, we could provide a golden ticket to where the dump fees are covered by the state, um, that's a resource you're able to utilize if, if possible, um, cause offsetting the cost of dumpsters, it can be expensive. So I, I can provide you what you call a golden ticket to get to landfill. So I don't need my contact information, cause I've been to the property multiple times and took the pictures.
This heavy woman and manly keeps going over there taking pictures of it.
Now, I, I took pictures one time, I'm not.
Not yet, I'm not for a case to, to, because there's a bunch of stuff involved with the property, so. No, Dan, there's even an hour trying to offer support we have.
Yeah, he, he's trying to help you as well, Brown, yeah, yeah.
You can't hardly get to my house, they got car parts all over the yard, they got about ten cars parked there. They have got trash everywhere, and you can't get up the road, or like four and five cars and a camper right on the road. Big motorhome.
It's on your property?
No, it's at the end of the road.
It's a non-conforming job.
Uh, and then.
So the, the commission can defer action in this case, that's what Allison, um, mentioned that, but the commission moved to defer action for sixty days and to reconsider it at a future meeting.
I'll get the work to travel out there in sixty days, but, you know, my hands, I thought it was gonna be the same, get people through it. I think I'll be back in here in about a month, but I can't spare to listen to them. I thought I'd be in here and be standing, but here I am. I've been living in somebody else's house since October, and that's not me.
Well, I think, I think the important thing, if I may be, kind of, if I may be presumptuous enough to speak on behalf of the commission, I think the important thing is, is everybody wants to see progress. If you're making progress, that will satisfy the, uh, commission as well as, uh, the, uh, enforcement agency.
But that feels like progress in some, you know, ways, no, I can't, I can't fill up a lot, I can't get somebody to do nothing, but she work. But as soon as, you know, not stolen, so, every time I start this, I get four or five, so, and then you last couple of weeks.
Okay, so you're aware, the enforcement agency recommended that all of the trash gets taken care of within sixty days, and that the windows be boarded up if they're open. The windows be boarded up if it's open.
Well, the only window that is open is boarded up.
Okay, alright, so.
But I'm gonna have a window replaced in here forever before I live there.
Or, yeah, she's gonna live there, I mean.
Yeah, so that was the recommendation, and then we're also going to see how you are in sixty days and revisit the situation.
Okay, we'll work it out, I promise, I can't lose my home, I don't have nowhere to go but there.
Okay.
And I keep, keep paying a thousand dollars, I'm not afraid, and Charleston, to live town there, when I got this up here and a thousand dollars, it doesn't fit. Necessities, and it's going for rent, well, not now, not since October, but.
And then.
I don't come stay for time.
My dad there, so I mean, why not? And then you have Dan's recommend, you have Dan's contact information.
Pocket here, I would bring my pocket again, I said today, run that thing over there, and I'm not my husband's, and I'm gonna sit there and stand lots, and they both like, I'm a murderer.
Well, for my part, you know, it, it ma, it means a lot that you came in today. Um, most people don't show up, so, uh, you know, I'm willing, you know, I think we'll work with you as long as we're seeing some progress on the property, and, and we'll do what we can, um, and what's fair to other taxpayers to help you.
Well, I appreciate anything you do, because I'm seven before eleven on social security, you don't have a whole.
And that man, get, that gentleman there gave you his card, so anything that he can do for you, I'm sure he'll try to do it, okay?
Give us another.
Okay. Well, wait there, don't. Okay, let's go to the. Okay, on property number twenty-six, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of, of the enforcement agency giving Ms. Brown thirty, uh, sixty days to clean up the trash from the property, and then we'll revisit again in sixty days.
So I could.
Wait, Anthony, can we do that, or do we need to defer deciding on the planning? We thought we had it down, y'all, but we don't.
Um, the recommendation from the, from the, um, enforcement agency was that the structure be repaired within sixty days, that the windows be boarded up, and that all trash and debris from the property be cleaned up. I mean, the problem is, is what I hear Ms. Brown saying, I, I don't know if we can be able to repair her structure within sixty days, so I think it would probably be best if the county commission deferred action and give Ms. Brown some time.
And I'll present it back to the.
Okay, after sixty days, do, do you wanna reword that, John, or you want Ms. Taylor to do it? I don't wanna do it.
I'll do it. For action on, on case number twenty-six for sixty days, um, to give Ms. Brown some time to mitigate the property and work with the litter control officer, and we can revisit the recommendation at that point.
Second, all favor?
Aye. Okay, so this is gonna be sixty days.
Okay, alright, so she does, while she's here, it is case one seventeen, it is one twenty, um, Hope from Loop, and the dwelling on the parcel appears to be unstable, unusable and unsafe for human habitation. The dwelling or structure appears to be in general state of pay, repair. It does not appear to be connected at the utility services, and the windows are not intact, allowing whether to intrude into dwelling or structure, and there is debris or refuse on property. And the enforcement agency does recommend that the structure on property be demolished and legally disposed of.
No, I'm not demolishing it, I'm fixing it, the storage, cause I'm a trouble, you don't have that. Uh, that I'm gonna fix it. Um, the windows is in there, it's just the doors where they tore the doors out, they've got to have doors to have. But other than that, that was not too much trouble to. Yeah, I'm taking a new furnace out there because I put my furnace to Charleston.
But you're not going to live in this, right?
No, I'm not going to live in that. And that's going to have uh. It's a long horse, night kind of stuff in there. Because I don't have a place for nothing else.
And again, the commission can defer taking any action on this property and we can certainly request that Ms. Brown. Um, within sixty days, go clean this property up as well. And then we can revisit in sixty days. If that's what the county commission wants wants to do, or we can adopt the enforcement agencies.
Not like to know the plan for it.
You know, this miss, the the you're not talking about living in this. This one might be a little bit different. This one might be a little bit different. And I think Ms. Taylor is wanting you to know your exact plan for this one.
I'm going to store it along with some stuff in the down in the ones that's the book I'm telling. My daughter's contact trailer and live beside of me and when she.
So Angela, can can you can you go back to the building commission and just I I am going to move that we defer this, but in the interim. Angela, could you go back to the building commission and ask if it would be suitable for for that purpose?
I can. Yeah, their their recommendation was tear down, but I can go back. We meet at the end of March and um I'll just tell them that your request. I mean, to see if they want to change their recommendation based on it just being used for storage.
Based on her her use plan. So we have their, you know, recommendation based upon what we know she wants to do with it since she's not trying to move anybody into it.
Oh, no, 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 no. I don't want nobody there.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we also defer this decision pending uh feedback from the. The uh building commission on um whether it would be suitable for storage if cleaned up.
Second, all favor.
Now, I I do want to uh also give you some background. These two properties are beside the lookout post office and they've been an issue for six plus years. This is the first time in the six years that Ms. Brown has shown up.
I haven't been home to coming all the time.
So.
In fairness, this is something that I started doing with Angela. We're starting to basically we're inviting the property.
And that's where you should be.
Right. The enforcement and I agree. Become the enforcement agency and we're inviting them to come to the county commission during these preliminary matters to provide their input. Apparently that wasn't that wasn't done to pass.
No, and and to continue, um, I would like to say that this is a good step forward. And I'm glad that we've changed our our rules and regulations around this. Um, I mean, this has given the property owner a chance to rectify the situation before we have to take legal action. Uh, so. But uh just make sure you get that garbage cleaned up and work with Dan.
I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wish I could reach you over there and hug you and I know this is not.
Long time. Yes, ma'am, it has been. I've come around, give you a hug anyway.
Then we gotta get back. We gotta get back to this.
Well, give her one from me.
I will. Take care, brother. Okay.
I can't hear anything.
Maybe she's just giving this round where she can take her tires. Okay.
You want to go ahead, Angela, with the next?
I can.
Hey, Robbie, you'll make sure it's taken care of. Okay.
All right. So next case is case thirty five twenty five Tax Branch Road, Mount Hope, West Virginia, two five eight eight zero. The enforcement agency met on March second and they said the property is abandoned and is not being used as a residential business. Dwelling is partially covered in vines and vegetation. The dwelling or structure appeared to be in general state of disrepair. Dwelling or structure appears to have been used for criminal activity. Um, their recommendation is that the structure on the property be demolished and legally disposed of. And I do believe this lady is deceased, so there is probably some estate issue that Anthony will have to look into.
Well, Anthony, would it be easier to give you time to look into it before we make a decision on it?
Well, the reality the reality is this, uh, the commission can. The commission can adopt the enforcement agency's recommendation, but. Service of the complaint may take additional time and they figuring out who we need to serve. But we can defer action until I get a better handle on who we need to serve.
So you want to do a thirty? You need about thirty days?
That should be that should be sufficient.
Okay, so I move we defer this one for thirty days to allow the prosecutor to determine who we're going to serve with any notices regarding the property.
Second, all favor. I don't mean to interrupt you. I mean, no, no, I don't need a break. Well, I do, but I don't want to take them right now.
I know. Let's keep trucking.
Yeah, let's keep track. I do want to ask one question. Is there any way that if the planning commission at the time they do this can figure out who they who they are? That we have to serve or who we have to do this before it comes to the commission?
Normally, the I think the code says who's on the tax assessor, so that's who I send these letters providing them. And he may, I mean, I just know.
Realistically, probably I probably should. If there's an issue, I'm just going to get a handle on that before we start the process. The ordinance doesn't require that, but it would make sense. And in in fairness, we're they we're basically starting this thing.
Correct.
Trying to get.
Yes.
So well, so it's just a procedural thing that we need to.
Yeah, and once we get the process established, it'll move forward a lot smoother. But I think your point is well taken. I think ownership. From at the front end rather than halfway through.
I just know from Google search that I found. I didn't know, like I said, there's no records at the Fayette County level. It's one of the seats. I just know she did it.
I understand.
Well, and 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 it makes sense too because we would want the property owner to be present if possible.
Yeah.
Now, we got a lot accomplished in Smithers by actually bringing people in.
Yeah.
Having a face to face with them and and it I thought it was very helpful.
Um, just a side note, I didn't mention this and um previously you guys had asked Anthony to add something in um the letter. So. The last portion of the letter that I send the property owners says you may also avoid further action being taken against you and your property if you transfer ownership of the property to Fayette County. And the Fayette County will take the appropriate steps to correct the problem with no further obligation on your part. Anthony did add that in the letter, um, just to let you guys. I forgot to tell you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Basically gives them the option of voluntarily working with us. Um, where we put the bill, they sign the deed of trust and a promise where you know, we do the demolition and disposal. We get a lien on the property and then they repay over time. And certainly the county commission. Can assess interest on that arrangement if you want to do that. I mean, even if it's a dollar a year. Um, but I want to get the property owners as as many option. It's better to work with.
I I agree. And that's what I said from again. Yeah, then just start leasing them down and.
That's just like Ms. Brown and everything and just.
And the reality is, is a lot of a lot of our citizens are not going to be able to come up with seven to ten thousand dollars to do the demolition disposal. But we give them the option of paying, you know, a hundred bucks a month, seventy five bucks a month. With a security interest in the property held at the county, then they may be willing to do something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so next case is case one one six or. Oh, it's. You guys, that's fine. I can. One one four. Uh, the address is five five three eight Legends Highway of Hill. The um dwelling on the property appears unusable and unsafe for human habitation. Their dwelling or structure appears to be in a general state of disrepair. The dwelling or structure does not appear to be connected in a utility service and dwelling or structure is accessible by vermin such as rodents. Free or refuse is present on the property. The recommendation of the enforcement agency is the property be demolished and property disposed of. You cannot see from the picture, but that house is completely full of clothes. It has been like that and disprepared for at least six years. And I always say it could be twenty. I don't know, but at least six years. So they felt as though it should be demolished.
And have we reached out to the property owner in this one? Do we have any information?
I have certified mail. They signed, but no phone calls.
Yeah.
Okay, well, in this case, I move that we accept the building commission's recommendation and impose a fifty dollar a day fee. Up until um the expenses to mitigate the property are met.
Did did we actually, did the property owner actually sign?
Yes. Yep.
And and dispose within thirty days?
Yes. Well, I, you know, actually, I think I think sixty days is a more reasonable amount of time, but. Um, given the work shortage and and the weather, but you know. So I'll move for sixty days. Did I miss any other thing?
I'm keeping quiet and make sure.
I think the demo, the the demo fees and the uh um legal fees.
Move for demo disposal within sixty days and then assessment of the fifty dollar civil penalty. Um, to commence at the end of the sixty days, not to exceed the cost of demo disposal, legal fees and other associated mitigation expenses.
That's Allison's. That's Allison's motion.
So Allison's motion was that they have sixty days to do the demolition. Um. Yeah, okay, so that's right. That's right.
I'll second.
All favor.
Okay, next case is um same property owner. It is right next to the property you guys just heard. It is case one fifteen and the parcel appears unusable and unsafe for human habitation. The dwelling or structure appears to be in a general state of disrepair. The dwelling or structure does not appear to be connected to any utility service. The dwelling or structure is accessible by vermin and such as such as rodents. Debris or refuse is present on the property. The recommendation of the enforcement agency is that the property be demolished and legally disposed of.
All right, so I make the same motion. Given that that the property owner's been served and and signed the the notice. Um, that we give them sixty days and then start implementing a fifty dollar fee up until the cost of mitigation. Including legal fees.
Second, all favor.
I'd like to do this.
Okay, John, that's what I was waiting for you to do.
Well, I'm wondering what's going on because.
Yeah, he's debating. I'm looking at him like, go ahead and you know.
Means that this particular owner owns multiple properties throughout the county. With several in the same manner as this one. I I wonder, and they have been contacted multiple times. I wonder if sixty days is appropriate or thirty days should be more appropriate for this particular landowner.
Well, two properties. I mean, do we know of other properties?
These are the only two that this lady owns in the county that I'm aware of.
Uh, no, this is.
This is not the one you're thinking. You're on the wrong case. That's one sixteen or one fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Yes.
Okay, so how about all those in favor?
All favor.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, John. Okay.
All right, go ahead. That's.
Okay, we're good with that vote. Okay, next case is one sixteen, four oh three one D Water Mountain Road. Fayetteville, West Virginia, two five eight four zero. The enforcement agency met and the property is abandoned and is not being used as residence or business. The dwelling only above parcel appears unusable and unsafe for human habitation. The roof or the structure is compromised. The dwelling or structure appears to be in a general state of disrepair. Doors are missing or not intact, allowing weather to intrude into dwelling or structure. The enforcement agency recommends that the property be demolished and legally disposed of. Don, this would be your discussion part now.
Your contact information about the principal.
I have him signing green cards. That's the I've never had a phone conversation. That's the best I can think of.
It's actually got. Last year. Talking to him.
I sent him a picture with the letters just because we can only send a picture, but I've never received a phone call. He just signs his certificate. Looks like you say he made a sign.
Well, has he, did you do a title search and see if he's done any kind of a owner financing to sell his property?
Um, there's no land contract recording.
Okay.
On this part. I've seen others, but not on this part. That's the best title search I can do.
Happens a lot with this property.
Yes.
It we had we had a case with Smithers and and basically when we started. Dealing with the property, he signed property owners to respect the buyer, the deed of trust, the shift, the responsibility of. Be able to property. I just wanted to see this.
Done that in the past property, but not this.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to uh accept recommendation of the enforcement agency. With doing a fine of thirty or fifty dollars per day to maximum of the amount of the demo and the legal fees. Um, and start the demo within thirty days on this one.
Start the demo or?
Or no.
Completely it's touched down and leave the demo.
No, the complete demo. Yes, in thirty days, yes.
Second, all favor.
Hi.
All right.
Okay, last one for today. It is one thirty six sixteen Fry Hill, Mount Hope, West Virginia, two five eight eight zero. The enforcement agency met. And the structure on the above parcel appears to be unusable as a business. The dwelling or structure appears to have been used for criminal activity. The structure is partially or completely collapsed. Free or refuse on is present on property. The enforcement agency recommends the property be demolished and legally disposed of. So, yeah. It's been for sale for at least five years. There is no roof on this truck, by the way. You cannot help me. Well, you can because you see true.
Okay. Um, what about the property owner?
Um, I will probably defer to Anthony on that from my not found any type of a degree, but I believe the property owner is deceased, so. It's something that Anthony can do.
Hey, in that case, I move we refer it defer it for thirty days to enable the prosecutor's office to identify an owner. For service.
Second, all favor. All right, that's it.
So you guys will have this. That's why I asked with us having the money from Reap and we have a very short period of time. I'm going to try to give you guys ten cases for at least once a month.
There you go.
Thank you. Y'all have this down.
Get get. There you go. Roll with it, girl.
For the next meeting, I'll have a script for the motion.
Thank you. I'm serious too.
What it is.
All right. All right, Ruth.
Ruth, can we jump to number six so Dan can get to it?
Number six, layer control officer Pay.
First, before we start this, I I want to say something. Dan, you did a great job down in the Whipple Scarborough area. Uh, the amount of phone calls that I received, the amount of people stopping me while I'm driving uh is just amazing. I want to congratulate you on doing a good job. Thank you very much.
Dan, um, we all, we all have been very impressed with it. I know you were worried that we would be upset about your interview with the press. Um, the opposite is true. We are very pleased um with with the event, the fact that the public was well aware of the event. Um, I think you did a great job.
Thank you as well. Um, and maybe I'll bring it up now since we're talking about Dan's. Dan had previously requested under the applicable ordinance, I'm sorry, I can be applicable, that you be able to finish you. By citations to the vendors directly. Historically, what we've done is gone through the sheriff's department. If we need to get that on the agenda, the. Um, we need to get that on the agenda and to the shot to write on that.
Okay.
But it's simply to give Dan the authority to issue citations as opposed to utilizing a member of the sheriff's department to issue citations for. As opposed to utilizing a member of the sheriff's department to issue citations for litter, litter control issues.
Okay. Well, with regard to Dan's uh, salary, um, given his performance and I think his future with the county. I think he is underpaid and I'd like to move that we increase the salary to forty thousand dollars a year effective. Um, the first possible pay period. What is that, Ruth?
On the, not the tenth, but the next. What is that, Amy?
Twenty fourth.
Yeah, second pay period in March. How about?
Okay, second pay period in March.
Second, all in favor?
Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Can I speak to the citation book?
Well, it's gonna be.
It's not on the agenda. It's gonna be on the agenda the next meeting, so if you could come to the next, okay, anything and. I do one, one hundred, it's a good, I'm training program and all. If you do a statement, there's others, they can write it, so. It's gotta be on the, it's gotta be.
Next, uh, acceptance of resignation, resignation of Jim L. Mormon from Page One K.
I move that we accept his resignation.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, so there's an item on here for support letter for site development for N R G R V A. But I don't have that letter.
Yes.
Um, and I think that is for earmarks that are due. Nobody's written that letter. We don't have really any info. Allison, Tom.
I know, we, I mean, they were going to provide us one and then I haven't heard anything since.
I haven't either. Can, is there any way we can make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I think we should move to approve it in, in concept and then we can make the edits, any edits over email. So I moved to prove it in cons, in concept.
And stamp it.
And stamp it.
Second, all in favor?
Uh, park improvements.
Abby, your turn.
Ho- hold on. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Alison.
Abby was there.
Yeah, she's here.
I'm just here for the meeting that we had last Wednesday with the park advisory board. And I provided the requested information, um, the pricing breakdown of some of the improvement projects. So I'm present for any questions you may have.
Oh.
We, we did increase your budget and there are some, you know, there's some additional money in your budget. How are you planning to use it toward these projects?
Is that FY twenty-three that you're speaking of or FY twenty-four, FY twenty-three? So that's a question that I guess was not, that we had coming out of the meeting last week. We'd be more than happy to use FY twenty-three funds for these projects. Um, we just wanted to get you guys the information so you knew what we were spending money on and what we were targeting. But we did not know as of Wednesday if we were talking FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four. Um, what your thoughts were, but we're the, we're the happy to take.
That's your job, Abby, is to, is to tell us. And that's your.
And then we make the final decision.
Well, then we would be more. I guess there's this question and then the camp funding that I have been in communications with Ruth about. Using FY twenty-three funds. So we would like to fund the camp out of FY twenty-three. And then additionally, these improvement projects.
So I think your camp would be split between two.
Okay.
Because it would be July and August too, right?
It would, but then we had discussed funding the camp for three years. So if you think of it.
Can't discuss. I mean, it would be in your next budget.
Okay, so I, in an ideal world, we would fund the twenty, twenty-three. Um, camp out of the FY twenty-three budget and then the twenty-four camp out of the FY twenty-four budget.
The twenty-three camp goes between budget years, so no, you can't. You can start it in now, but June thirtieth you should cut off. Like you're not just gonna write a check to somebody and say, here, let's pay for July and August and.
Sure, sure. Yep. So most of the camp expenses will be in the twenty-three budget. Because camp ends the twenty-eighth of July.
So do you know what you have left in your budget?
I do not. I know of.
More than enough to cover both.
Okay.
There's like fifty some thousand dollars just sitting in building and equipment group.
So can we approve this today, I guess? Then next fifteenth, we'll do the other, just to get. Okay.
Well, what are we approving? Because Abby with Ruth, you know, with Ruth's oversight. Has the ability to spend what's in her budget. So what are we approving today?
The twenty-five thousand.
It's twenty-five thousand dollars worth of expenses.
Yep, twenty-five thousand dollars to do some bathroom, dining hall and cabin improvements.
Okay, so I move we approve that.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Yep. Did he start already washing the walls down?
Uh, they're.
That's the voice of experience.
Alright, see that. Alright, let's, let's go ahead, Ruth.
Okay, the next, okay, this is. Is this someone from Wesley?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so this is. An application to request for public assistance from West Virginia Emergency Management Division for the August twenty twenty-two flooding. This is another document that has to be signed in order to move forward to get reimbursed for some of those expenses.
I move we approve it.
Second, second, all in favor?
Alright, Ruth, this last. And then the last one's the.
We have any applicants?
Oh, I, I, no, but I, I, I. I guess I need to have somebody fill one out. I mean, I have an applicant, but I didn't.
Did you contact Joe Ray?
That's what I'm saying. I've already, you know, I just need to have him fill out the application.
So you want to move this to three fifteen?
I think can use his, he applied for something fairly recently. Um, for N R G R D A, didn't he? So I think we can use that application.
Okay, I didn't know whether we could use it or not. Okay.
We approve Joe Ray, appoint Joe Ray to the building commission.
Second, all in favor?
We'll have two more that need to be done at some point.
Yeah, I mean, we, we batted some possibilities around. Um, but I don't have my notes on me to tell me. I remember one of them. Oh, I do remember both of them. So John, John had suggested Dan Hill. John, could you reach out to Dan and?
I'll do that here in just a minute or two.
And I'll reach out to Steve Eads. Unless somebody else comes up with somebody else to apply. And, you know, for the public's information, if somebody wants to apply for the building commission now is the time. Let's put those other appointments on for the fifteenth. We need to get that thing constituted fully.
Yep.
Was that it?
The only thing left is budget discussions. If there's anything you wanted to discuss.
I'm, I'm good with everything. John may need to discuss something. I'm good with everything.
He's asking Dan Hill, I think.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but I just gotta ask him if it's okay if he wants to do it. Okay, alright, so um. Yeah, no, I mean, we're gonna talk, so I'm fine. Let's close the meeting.
Alright, motion adjourned.
Second, whatever.
Yeah, second, third, whatever.